So let's go ahead and get started. And with that, I'm going to call to order the April 5th, 2021 Regular Board of Alderman Meeting. Whether everyone please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America. Into one nation under God.
And just. Pro call, please, Kelly.
Alderman Plufka.
Here.
Alderwoman Tice.
Here.
Alderwoman Sims.
Here.
Alderman Weggie.
Here.
Alderman Gould. Not present. Alderman Lockmiller.
Here.
Alderwoman Evelyn.
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neil.
Here.
Seven of our eight members are present.
Okay, thank you, everybody. First item we have on the agenda is a proclamation, and that's for Arbor Day. So if you will bear with me a second. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the city of Brentwood has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting practices. Now, therefore, I, Mayor David Demmett, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the city of Brentwood and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being being of this and future generations. Presented this fifth day of April 2021. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes? Any objection to approving the same by acclamation? See, none, it will be approved. Next up, we have citizen comment. Anybody in the public care to address the board? Now is the time to do so. You will be given up to three minutes.
We have.
Nobody looking to address the board. Okay. Moving on, mayor and aldermen reports. First up is the mayor. Couple of things. Although the public probably won't see this meeting until after tomorrow, but tomorrow is Election Day. All the municipalities have their their elections. And once again, the St. Louis, St. Louis County Board of Election is allowing every people, registered voters, to vote anywhere at any polling places in St. Louis.
There's no rush at all. I'll be here all evening. Talk to you later. Bye.
Okay. Secondly. Secondly, I have decided that we are going to try and resume in-person Board of Alderman meetings at the first meeting in May, May 3rd. A lot of thought went into that. I tried to do it earlier. But the company that we utilize, which is, I believe, St. Louis Video is the name of it. If you can remember back, all the way back to, at least when we were meeting at the school board headquarters, and even before then, back in, I guess it would have been September or October of 2019, back at City Hall. That company is the one that handled all the video and the audio for our meetings. We've reached out to them, and they need to get back up to speed. But unfortunately, with the mayor's election in the city of St. Louis, they could not get us ready to go by April 17th. So instead, we're looking to do it on May the 3rd. And so that's it. That's all I have. Next up is Alderman Plufka.
I don't actually have a report, except I just have a question. We went through this with one other Election Day during COVID, and I guess I've just sort of forgotten. We're still under a mask. Encouragement requirement. And obviously, there's no handshaking going on. Is, are the, any of the elected officials, I'm just curious, as you give your report, are they going to be at any of the polling places tomorrow? That's just my sort of general question. And beyond that, I don't have any report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And if, as you give your report, if you care to express your opinion, what your plans are for tomorrow, go ahead and do so. Alderwoman Tice.
I have no report. I don't plan to, other than going to the polling place to vote, I don't plan to spend time outside tomorrow, although if for anyone who wants to, it's going to be gorgeous.
Alderwoman Sims.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ward Two will be having its meeting tomorrow night via Zoom, starting at 6:00 PM. It is promised to be the most interesting ward meeting that could ever possibly be conceived. So I hope everyone will tune in. Challenge accepted. In addition, the, there will be an additional Special Ways and Means Committee meeting April 15th at 5:30. I have that as the correct date. Does that? Yes, a fee blowing nodding. April 15th, Tax Day at 5:30, where we will continue our discussion of the compensation report that was prepared by Pigby and Associates. So please feel free to tune into that one as well. Other than to vote, I do not plan on hanging out at the election polls, but I wish I could be outside, but I gotta go to work. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Weggie.
Yeah, I'll see. Public Works will be on Thursday, 6:00 PM. Despite Cardinals opening home opener, I couldn't get it canceled. But we will be talking about the SWT playground designs and the next steps on Mad Infest, or I'm sorry, Brentwood Days going forward. So an exciting meeting for sure. And I will not be at the polls. I'll be working at the Vaccine Clinic. We have some new volunteers, especially in the afternoon, which will require extra training. Thank you.
Alderman Gould is not with us. We're going to go to Alderman Lockmiller.
I have no report, but to answer Alderman Plufka's question, I'll probably be in and out of the rec center. That's our normal polling place for Ward Three. So I'll be there some of the day. Got to hold Andy's hand.
Alder. Alderwoman Evelyn.
I have no report, except to say I'll see anybody that's up there voting tomorrow, just to say hi.
And Alderwoman O'Neil.
Yes, I report as Library Lea San. There is a soft opening of our public library. They have reduced hours, but they are open to 10 people at a time for 30 minutes a person. So far, things should be going well. They have not been overrun. Hours Monday and Tuesday are 10 to 6, Wednesday through Friday, 12 to 6, and Saturday, 9 to 1. There's no appointment needed. It's just go in. But if you prefer curbside service, they still do curbside service. They also have opened two public computers, which hadn't been opened via COVID for a while. So that that is part of their their function. They're happy to do that. As for voting, I plan to go vote. I do not plan to stay there, although I understand one of the candidates for the Ward Four Alderman seat may spend time at the rec center.
Okay, thank you. There was two things that I left out. Number one, I wanted to thank Alderman Weggie for his his efforts at volunteering at the St. Louis County Department of Health Vaccination Site. He has gone above and beyond being a public servant in in volunteering his time to try to ensure that we get as many people vaccinated as possible. And he is, as some of you may not have heard beforehand, he is, he's one of the supervisors at at the Heights, running a very tight ship. I hate it anytime I volunteer when he's a supervisor, because he's especially hard on us. And secondly, some of you had asked about a workshop to go over Brentwood Bound, where we are, what what we can be looking at, and as well as looking, digging into more into the playground. We are going to be meeting in May, and you'll be getting some possible dates when we will, we will try and hold that workshop. It'll be like what we've done in the past, probably over at the rec center. But check your email for that. So next month, we will be having that much requested workshop. So with that, let's move on to item A, the City Administrator Report. The first up is the Brentwood Bound update. And with that, I think we're going to turn it over to Craig.
Good evening. Craig Schutter with Navigated Building Solutions. So I'll be providing a little bit more of a thorough update, because a lot of stuff has been happening in the past couple of weeks and is going to happen for the next month. Sorry, with the playground. So SWT, you all approved their contract at last board meeting. They've been thoroughly working on coming up with some concept drawings. They're going to be presenting those concept designs to the Public Works Committee this Thursday, and they're going to come, be presenting various concept designs to match some of the budgets requested from them. Next is the Event Lawn Comfort Station Building. Design is progressing towards the design development phase. They'll finish it up on April 30th, and then we'll do another estimate. And then we'll report back to you all on some of the sustainability costs and benefits of some of those measures. So that will happen in May. Deer Creek Greenway Connector. This is the project that Jacobs and Plan Designs working on. Their 95% drawings are due early May, which will allow the permitting process to begin. Design team will also be presenting to you all this 95% design in the month of May or June. We're actually targeting the middle of May Board of Alderman meeting for that presentation. Flood mitigation phase one, construction remains in progress. Everything's going well. The horseshoe sewer that you all saw, that that big 72-inch sewer line that runs right through the project, continues to be installed. Mass excavation is continuing every day, along with the haul off. The project remains on schedule and on budget. Flood mitigation phase two. This project is projected to go out to bid this Thursday, April 8th. This will allow us to bring the recommended contractor to you all in the month of May. Next is Manchester Road Improvements. The project is also projected to go out to bid on April 8th. This will allow MoDOT to award the contractor in June. And here are some updates on some of their schedule requirements, which is good, because kind of helps us all plan and be aware of next steps. MoDOT bought three buildings on the behalf of Brentwood to allow for the tunnel construction to happen. Those buildings were the Church of God Building, the apartment building at Mary Avenue, Manchester, along with Alpha Graphics, which is at Dorothy and Manchester. They put in schedule requirements that those buildings need to be demoed in the late summer, early fall. This will allow for MSD then to install some of their pipes in the same area. The bridge replacement at Black Creek. So they'll actually have to demolish that bridge. That's the bridge that's close to Hanley on, actually on Manchester Road, near the former Frederick Roofing site. This will require a full closure for that bridge to be rebuilt. And that'll happen between May of 2022 and August of 2022. The Mary Avenue Pedestrian Bridge will happen at that same time, because traffic will be low. That will also happen at the May 22 and August, between May of 2022 and August of 2022. But while that is happening, they'll keep one lane open going each direction. So really, the summer of 2022, the new bridge will get installed, and along with the tunnel. So with MoDOT, because they're going out to bid this Thursday, as part of the cost share agreement that you all approved a while ago, you have to do deposits for that agreement to allow for this project to commence. So one, you did a while ago for property acquisitions. That was a partial payment for property acquisitions. The other one, which is on the warrant list tonight, is for the construction improvements. So with your all approval of the warrant list, they'll actually advertise, the city will wire the money tomorrow, and then they'll advertise and go out to bid on the 8th. So everything's going per plan there with that deposit, because that's all based on the cost share agreement. So that's exciting that that project is getting close to actually going out to bid and actually going to start construction this summer. Because like you guys are aware, we have faced multiple delays in that project. So it'd be great to actually get that one underway. The next item is a new Brentwood Bound risk. So just to be transparent about what's happening in the market, the construction market is very volatile right now. There is an unprecedented mix of steeply rising material prices and supply chain challenges. Some of these are due to, like, the pandemic experienced multiple issues of various products where, like, for example, lumber mills were shut down. And then people thought that the supply would go down, or I'm sorry, that the man would go down. But actually, last year, the construction market was very busy. So when there was this kind of a slowdown of the supply of products, but the demand rose, it increased the prices quickly. In addition, recently, in Texas, they had a lot of freezing. That affected the petroleum market, which a lot of our construction products have, are petroleum-based, like asphalt, like a lot of the piping products that go in the ground. And then there's this Suez Canal issue with that boking stock there. We don't really know the impacts from that. But there's just a lot of things happening on a global basis. And a lot of this affects the commodities, which affect the prices that we all pay for for construction products. So on the good side, even though construction prices are going up, right now, the construction market isn't too busy right now. So contractors are bidding projects fairly aggressive. It's important that we get these projects out soon, because there seems to be a lot of demand that could be forthcoming. There's talks about a big infrastructure bill. There's a lot of things breaking loose. Some communities and some agencies have some extra money to do projects. So with us getting these projects out to bid this week will definitely help, because I foresee in a couple of months, the problem could get worse. But because of that, you know, the the prices are going up, but we aren't seeing the bid pricing going up the same percentage, because some contractors are absorbing some of those material cost increases in their bids, in their fees and profits. So we don't know when that's going to change. There's a point where there's been so much demand that contractors can take projects at a higher fee. So what does this mean for you all? So on your project, some of the price, some of the materials that are going up are steel. Phase two, we have steel in the bridge. We have steel, because that's a rebar. And there's also steel in various concrete. The piping that goes in for some of these various flood mitigation measures, a lot of those have materials in them that the pricing's going up. We do have some lumber. We have to frame up various concrete with the sidewalks, with the bridge. So there is some lumber lumber. I mean, if you go to Home Depot, you can see what dimensional lumber, which is like 2x4s, 2x6s, sheets of plywood, how much those costs have gone up. So there is some of that. And then probably the easiest one that's really tangible for us is diesel. Diesel's gone up a lot. I mean, just look at the price at a gas pump that we've seen go up in the past six months, you know? So like we know, and this project's unique, we need a lot of dump trucks. With dump trucks comes diesel. We also have a lot of big equipment on site, which is diesel. So I tell you all this just to be transparent about risk. The materials are changing every week. I can't tell you an exact dollar amount. I believe your contingency is more than sufficient to cover both these projects, Manchester Road Improvements and Flood Mitigation. You know, that, but I just want to be honest with you, that there could be some increases in pricing, because up to this point, every project's come in well on their budget. So this project could come in over, but it's not like it's going to absorb all the contingency that I go through on the next part of my presentation. So like I said, I just always try to be honest with you guys on risk. Nobody can predict this stuff. It's all unforeseen. It's all commodities. I don't think this is gloom and doom. It's just that our bid prices could come in slightly over. But like I said, I truly believe that the contingency, we could absorb an increase and still have plenty of contingency for the project. So not trying to scare you all, but again, just trying to be honest. One last thing is Ameren on the consent agenda. I talked about this on our board tour. We have to relocate some of the Ameren lines out of Norm West Park. Ameren doesn't give you estimates. We did our best on coming up with a projection on that. The the projection came in slightly over budget. And some of that is due to some of the material increases they told me. But also, some of it's honestly due to, you know, it's it's hard to really estimate something like a utility. And Ameren won't give us prices, even though we constantly ask them. So overall, it wasn't anything too catastrophic, but that is something that was identified as a potential risk for the project. But at least we know that with your all approval tonight, that we can move forward with that and at least have that behind us. Going to my law, normal update on spending since the last Board of Alderman meeting. So construction costs, the total spend since the last Board of Alderman meeting is $3,666,666,112.50. Some of that is for the demo package 1C. The majority of that is for the MoDOT payment that was required for them to actually go out to bid, which is based on the cost share agreement that was approved. Next is soft costs. Total spend since the last Board of Alderman meeting was $148,063.49. That was on survey, project management fees, material testing, Union Pacific Consulting, utility costs, event lawn and comfort station design, and environment surveys. Next is property acquisitions. Total spend since the last Board of Alderman meeting is $717,000. And next is contingency. So we've got $5,781,434 that's not committed. And I actually put in the Ameren costs in this. So you can see that even with the Ameren approval, that we're still in good shape on contingency, knowing where the project currently is. Also, the total budget did go up. And what I did is, since we presented the budget at the last Board of Alderman for the Event Lawn Comfort Station Building, I wanted to make sure that the budget reflected what the budget is for the Event Lawn Comfort Station Building is. This doesn't include any of the solar or the geothermal. But I know you guys are going to be thinking about what to do with the playground. And so I just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of where we currently are with the current projects, just so that way you can factor all that in with your playground decisions on what what type of playground you guys want to implement in the next couple of months. So what I did with that is, part of the GRG grants, I moved up some of that money up there. Like we've talked about, it's important to show, you know, the use of grant funds when they are being awarded. The Muni grant was actually allocated for the Comfort Sun, Comfort Station and Event Lawn Building. So when you add up those two numbers, you'll get, get exactly $2,150,000, which is the budget we presented recently. Also, in the Phase Two project, we, we talked about back in November, how the Phase Two Trails are part of the project, along with the 319 grant, which are water quality improvements to the pond that's at the former Midwest Flooring Building. So those are the two improvements that get the Flood Mitigation Phase Two project up to what's actually in the project to accommodate that grant that was awarded. And then in the additional funding sources. So since the last meeting, we learned that the investment income, the investment income that comes from the reserve funds can only be used to pay off the debt early. So I broke that out, because that money is just going to be, it can't be allocated for this project. That's why it's identified like that. And then I also got an updated investment income number, which is below that. That's $1,573,171.44. And then lastly, we had talked about this before. I believe this was put into your weekly board memo that Dan Gummerheimer and group won another East West Gateway Grant. And this is for the Norm West Park to Brentwood Park connection. That is in the amount of $1 million. So that was formalized last week. We got the award from East West Gateway, so that is a done deal. And this is really exciting, because not only does that provide that critical connection that is part of the master plan, which is great, but that was also a catalyst to allowing you all get that signal at the Norm West Park entrance, because they're all tied together. So that was a big deal. So though, that was a lot of information. Those are the updates, and I can take any questions.
Craig was breaking up there. Okay, questions? Okay, Alderman Plufka.
Thanks. Craig, can you, you know, looking at the, it looks like by my calculation, and I realize part of this was not predictable, but that the Ameren bid comes in about 30% higher than what was budgeted. 675 to 867. Is that a, is that a precursor of things to come? Do you think that, that, that that's the kind of percentage over budget that we're going to be on some of these things, where we've got higher commodity costs and and building costs? Materials costs?
Good question. So it's not a copy paste, so we can't just apply that to all of them. We, we follow a lot of the commodities, a lot of various agencies all across St. Louis. And there is, I wish there was a good answer. We would all love it. But really, a lot of that increase was due to us really just trying to do our best to estimate what what the Ameren cost would be. Nobody can come up with that cost better than Ameren. And Ameren, they won't give us a cost. They, they're like, why? You know, like, you can't use anybody else. So, um, so a lot of that honestly was just us doing our best to guess, and we were off. And a very little of that was the actual increase in the bid prices. So you don't have to worry about a 30% increase in these other projects that you can't apply that here. But good question.
Is that it, Dave? Okay, Alderwoman Sims, did you have your hand up? Okay. Alder, Alderman Lockmiller.
Hey Craig, going back to the Manchester Road Improvements, is that separate bids or all those bullet points in one bid package?
They are all one bid package. So you know, they'll have one general contractor that will do the whole project from Hanley to Limburg.
Do you think when they, they'll be doing the tunnel and the bridge at Hanley at the same time?
Correct. Yeah, and the goal of that is, is that you want to, you want to make the impact on Manchester Road for the shortest period of time possible. So when they shut down that bridge, you're not going to have much east and west traffic, right? Because there's a lot of traffic that just was going beyond the businesses that are between Brentwood and Hanley. So they know that they're going to have traffic drop down. So at that time, when traffic's low, because of the bridge being shut down, because of it also being the summer season, so there's not, schools are out and some other aspects, that then they want to do the tunnel at the exact same time. So they will do those concurrently to manage the impacts to Brentwood and the neighbors and businesses and everything like that.
But there'll be some way to get across that bridge. Where they're doing the tunnel, there'll be some way to get across it. I'm just thinking of all the people that are going to be landlocked between these two projects.
Yeah, they'll keep one lane open each direction on the tunnel. That's one of the requirements, is they can't shut down that section of Manchester between Hanley and the tunnel for those three months. You, you have to have access one way or the other. So if you shut down the, the bridge on the east side, you have to have access on the west side, which is the tunnel. And they're going to do that by having one lane open in each, each direction.
Okay. And then when are they demoing Brentwood Plastics?
They're actually, this month, they're actually, they're supposed to start Wednesday or Thursday this week, and it will be completely demolished in the next three weeks.
Great. All right, thank you.
Alderman Weggie.
Hey Craig, same on Manchester Road Improvement. So that's great, they're going out for bid. What about the property acquisitions? You had been telling us that they were behind on a lot of the construction easements. And, and the three buildings you mentioned, have they, have they acquired those completely? Or is there still some risk in their schedule, you think?
Though, their schedule, there's not risk there, because they're going to go out to bid, regardless if they have all the easements completed or not. And that's because they have so much work to do between Limburg and Hanley, that if there's roughly, I think, just in the Brentwood piece, there may be about 17 easements that are not complete. They know there's plenty of work to have them, the contractor work, to not delay them. And they know that through the property acquisition process, they'll be able to acquire those before it causes any issues. The other part about your question about, do they own those three buildings that are going to be demolished? They do. So Alpha Graphics, they own. Church of God, they own. And the apartment building, they own. Those are the three full acquisitions for Manchester Road Improvements. They own all three. And at least Church of God and the apartment building are actually vacant. They're fully empty. They could demolish them tomorrow. Alpha Graphics, I think they have a lease agreement, but that tenant will be vacated by the time. but that tenant will be vacated by the time they need demolish it, because they do own that building.
Okay, and then one more thing. So Sustainability Committee talked about the geothermal heating, and hopefully that flowed back. And I'm not sure the mechanism of that, but the recommendation was not to pursue that. Just it seemed to make sense for the ROI, but the continuous solar. So hopefully Eric informed you of that, but just wanted to be sure.
Thank you. You guys are still interested in solar, though, coming up with the costs and at least reviewing it?
That was the recommendation from Suscom. So, you know, I don't know what action the board needs to take to direct that, or if we need to address that at Public Works, or, you know, I'll leave that up to Boa.
Well, we plan on coming back to you all in May with, we're going to be design development. So we'll just know more about the building, the mechanical system, because before we presented to you all, the building, the design was at 30%, will come up to 60% in May. So it's double, and there's a lot that we learned from that. So at that point, we'll be able to look at the energy loads from mechanical system, and we'll be able to give you guys new updated numbers on solar based on that. And then if it's okay with you all, you can make the call then, whether you want to pursue that or not, or maybe you're ready to do it now. It's up to you all. But we'll just have more information in about 30 days.
Sounds like a great answer to me personally.
Thanks, Craig. Anybody else have any questions for Craig? Seeing none. Okay, great. Thank you, Craig. We'll take up the next item under the City Administrative Report, which is Item B, the 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and the Audit. Who's handling that, Boa?
Derek Goken. Kelly, will you unmute him?
Thank you very much. As was said, my name's Derek Oken. I'm with Daniel Jones and Associates. And I'm going to quickly go over the 2019 audit. In our opinion, the city's financial statements begin on page one. We issued an unmodified opinion. This is the, or this means we had a clean audit, and is the highest opinion that we can issue. The city ended 2019 with a total net position of a little over $23.7 million and total fund balances of $81.7 million. We had no financial statement findings for the year ended 2019. And I believe we should have given you a management letter with the auditor report that just contains standard wordage, which we are required to give you. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, any question? I believe this was presented to the Ways and Means, wasn't it, Alderman Sims?
Yes, it was.
Yes, that's correct. And the fact that it was a clean audit, we didn't really have any questions.
Right, great. Do we have, anybody have any questions about this? Great, all right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. And we have six items underneath that. Anybody have any questions about any of those items? Okay, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
They're moved.
Second. And any discussion on that? Okay, roll call, please, Kelly.
Alderman Ploufka? Alderman Ploufka?
I think he froze.
He's on, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, why don't you skip him?
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Wegi?
Yes.
Alderman Gould? Oh, he's not here, sorry. Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evelyn?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
Yes.
Alderman Ploufka left, and hopefully we lost him.
He's going to have to reconnect, so we'll just go ahead and mark that down as a six-zero vote in support.
Right. Right, which is.
Okay. That brings us to old business. We have one item. That's Bill Number 6320. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second reading of Bill 6320 by title only, please?
Bill Number 6320, second reading and consideration for adoption, ordinance granting site development plan approval to Frederick Company Incorporated for access and parking lot modifications at 2827 South Brentwood Boulevard.
Great, thank you. Lisa, if you could bring the board up to speed on any changes that have been made since the last meeting.
No, there have been no changes made to the application. The ordinance or the bill that was written is the one that's still, for first reading, is still the one presented for second reading this evening. And there has been no additional correspondence received from any of the elected officials or constituents.
Okay, thank you. Can we get a motion to perfect Bill Number 6320 into ordinance form, please?
So moved.
Second.
And we got a motion by Alderman Lockmiller, seconded by Alderman Sims. Any discussion on this? Alderman Lockmiller.
Could I just, is Bob Frederick available? I just have a comment.
Yes, can you hear me? Yes, we can hear you, Bob.
Bob, I just, I just, just a comment, just a heads up that, you know, you're kind of taking over what's been a kind of a passive commercial property. And, you know, when you're a budding residential, and now you guys are going to have dumpsters and trucks going in and out, I just, a heads up to kind of respect the noise level for the residents. They're going to be behind you in the mornings. And I guess my question is, what's going to happen to the Frederick Roofing trailer?
We're eliminating that.
Oh, great, that's good. Thank you. That's all, you're on.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Anybody else have any discussion? Seeing none, can we get a roll call, please?
Alderman Ploufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Wegi?
Yes.
Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evelyn?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
Yes.
Bill passes by a vote of seven to zero. Let's see, and the bill will become ordinance number 4958.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Brings us to new business. There are two items under that. The first is Bill Number 6321. Can we get a first reading by title only, please?
Bill Number 6321, first reading, an ordinance of the City of Brentwood, Missouri, approving a certain easement agreement with Bi-State Development Agency of the Missouri Illinois Metropolitan District, authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith, providing for the effective date of this ordinance, and containing a severability clause.
Great, thank you. Who's handling this? Is this Mark?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mark.
All right, good evening. This is a first reading before tonight of a, pardon me, a bill to approve an easement agreement with Bi-State. You may recall, we originally had a conception of this being part easement and part fee acquisition. We've gone around with Bi-State a few different times, and they've told us this is a lot easier from the grant and easement. And so that's where we have an easement for your consideration tonight. Good news is, it's a little less costly for us to acquire this. The compensation is $34,134, which is based on appraised value we received, and then did the math to base it on a per square foot basis.
Okay, do we have any questions about this? Okay, we're just doing a first reading tonight, right?
That's correct.
Great, okay. Well, then we will move on to the next item under new business, and that's Bill Number 6322. Can we get a first reading of Bill 6322 by title only, please?
Sir, as soon as I get over there, I apologize for that. Bill Number 6322. First reading, an ordinance approving easements for water facility relocations for the Brentwood Bound Improvement Project.
Great, thank you. Who's handling this? Dan, is Dan available?
He is, Dan's available.
Okay, Dan, if you are unmuted, go ahead and.
Yes, I guess you can hear me now.
Yes.
Okay, if you guys recall, there's been several easements that were needed for utility relocations. This one is with Missouri American Water. We've already done some easements with Missouri American Water to relocate a water line and a hydrant over by the apartments near Brentshire Walk and Brazu. And these are two new easements. So you have 2805 Mary, that's part of Brentwood Bound, and then the 8002 Manchester, which is actually over by the new MODAT Bridge. And since the city acquired the Frederick Roofing property over there at 8002 Manchester, there's actually the need for a temporary construction easement. So Missouri American is asking for that through the city, since the city now owns it. There's no cost for these. They prepared the exhibits. They are offering $2,800 for the TCE over at 8002 Manchester. So before you is the language to do a first and second reading, since I don't believe anything's changing on it, to make that bill an ordinance and give those easements to Missouri American.
Okay, we have any questions about that? Okay, sounds like we want to do a second read on this. So anybody have any objection to that? If not, can I get a motion for a second read of Bill 6320? Okay. Great. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill 6322 by title only, please?
Bill Number 6322, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance approving easements for water facility relocations, excuse me, for the Brentwood Bound Improvement Project.
Great, thank you. Get a motion to perfect Bill 6322 in ordinance form, please.
They're moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Tice, seconded by Alderman Sims. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Ploufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Wegi?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evelyn?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to perfect the bill. Vote is seven to zero, and the bill passes. It'll become ordinance number 4959.
Great, thank you, Kelly. Next on the agenda is Citizen Comments. Anybody in the public care to address the board now, it's the time to do so.
We don't have anyone at this point.
Okay, tonight, we do need to go, we've got a couple of matters for closed session. So if we could get a motion to go into closed session pursuant to RSMO, Section 610.021, subsections 1, 2, and 3, legal, real estate, and personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Or into adjourn from that closed session? Sure, thank you. And with that, can we get a roll call, please, Kelly?
Alderman Ploufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Wegi?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evelyn?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, folks. Why don't we adjourn, and you should have your invite in your email. And let's try and get back together in just a couple of minutes.
Okay, thank you.